Welcome everyone to the Ashland Planning Board meeting of Thursday, June 20th. Just a reminder to everyone that the meeting is being broadcast and recorded. So we will start our meeting tonight with the, well first of all, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:16 and we will start as usual with the Clerk's report. Kate?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've received one correspondence since the last Planning Board meeting which has been responded to by the Clerk on behalf of the Board.
Thank you. All right, getting right to business tonight. We have three public hearings, all of which we have seen before. There's nothing new in the public hearings tonight and the first one of those is Sixth Chestnut Street. We do have the applicant here, but we also have, so for any questions, but we also have a draft of the, we have a draft of the approval document. Is that, what tab are we under there?
That, excuse me, that is going to be behind tab number one.
Okay, thank you. So we will be looking at that first. Also, everyone has a packet on their desk of the updated drawings, so we can look at those and what has been included, unless we want to go through them on the board. I guess we can, if you want to put them up, Peter, we can just kind of briefly go through them. So that we can note the things that have been, note certain things that are on there prior to our discussion. Nope, that's okay. So I thought what we can do is just go through the drawings, just pointing out the things that we had asked for that were still in flux and that are covered on the drawings, if anyone sees anything amiss, and then we can go through the documents, make sure that's all in order, and make any changes. I assume Peter can open the Word document and make any changes as we go?
Yeah.
And, and hopefully feel like we're in a position to move to a vote tonight. You good? Okay, that's obviously for our audience, they can see what we're talking about. We have it in front of us. So anyone, please be, feel free to jump in, but on page one, the things I noticed that we had talked about are, I believe there was the change in the plantings that Kathy Rooney had some input on in collaboration with, with Becca?
They, you know, the plantings were looked at by Kathy Rooney, but also the plantings are what was approved by the Conservation Commission regarding non-native, and so these plantings that are proposed were approved by Conservation.
Okay. And then I also notice, I don't know what the diagram is, it's in the lower left, that the, that the bike rack has been moved into that corner space near parking, what was parking space, 18, and there are what are called wheel stops to prevent, for safety reasons, and there's also some of the wheel stops in front of the building again, and those are the things that were reviewed with Doug Scott, the, the Building Commissioner.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
For safety. Anyone else have any questions on that page? Dumpster is obviously shown in the corner.
Ah, excuse me, I just have to jump to the renderings. The first two are existing conditions.
I think a lot of the information on the second page seems similar to the first page.
I think it's a copy of, all the notes are the same.
Okay. And then in the renderings, I think the important aspects were back when we actually get to the elevations where the materials are specified and called out. It also looks that the lighting along the Chestnut Street side was reduced to three lights, which I think was deep as recommendation that there were maybe too many lights on that facade. So those were reduced in number. And as, as I said, we had asked for more, for more specific information about the, about the actual materials. Let me know if you need to.
No, I got them all.
Okay.
Nope, you should have them.
All right. If no one has any immediate questions, we can start looking at the decision, which is under tab one. So Peter, on the copy you have in, in our binders, you, did you already update the revision date of the drawings?
Yes, all revision dates are updated.
I have a question. So we refer to those like drawings and some of them do have the materials, but they don't have a date. Is that something we should try to like put a date stamp on or something? So then it's not, like it's clear to match the record?
You know, I think these are all received. I haven't saved.
So we could just print a date stamp?
Some of them do, you know, the, the blast.
And then this, this could be updated instead of saying NA to put the date stamp? Even if it's today's date, then it's, then it's a record to match something.
Right, well, I'm just wondering about like, okay, so you, you dates, are you talking about date stamping a paper copy?
Well, I guess so, and then we can rescan it for the record.
Oh, that's true.
I, I feel like, just for being professional, that's not the best way to leave this. I have no issues that I think anything's going to happen. I just would like to.
Do you have, I mean, we could write it on too, but do you have a date stamp, a date stamp at your desk?
Yeah, we'll have a date received.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have that in my desk.
So then this could be updated, say, received date.
Received on?
Yeah.
Okay, that's no problem.
So.
So I receive these plans on.
The month and time date is dated on the title block.
Correct.
Some of the renderings.
You're talking about the renderings.
Yeah, just the ones that are NA.
Just received though.
Yeah.
Received on whatever.
Yeah, we can do that.
And then put it on, we probably have to stamp it on these though, right, and rescan, or electronically get it on the file.
Just one copy?
Yeah, you can just scan it.
And then save it, yeah.
Yes, correct.
It's in the file.
Yeah.
I already have these all saved. I already have these saved, received as.
Yep.
And then I can just take that date and take care of it.
So the, the elevations have the date on them, at least there's a date on here, is that right?
Yeah, so the elevations have the date on them.
Yeah.
On June 10th.
Okay, which is really the more.
Is it June 10 or May 10?
You know what, I, that's a typo, I just realized.
Because it says May 10.
Yep, nope.
Sorry, we gotta do this.
So there should be a six.
There should be a six and not a five.
And the plan, the site plan revision date of May 21st, and May 20, May 21st, May 22nd with revision date and the stamp date, but that's what's on these, right?
Correct, that's what's on this one right here, May 22nd, 2024.
Okay. So we'll update that, so it's, is that a package, you know, to be, for the record to be put online with the date stamp?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else in the list of drawings? Okay. So is everyone comfortable if I move over to start talking about conditions? Okay. So documents of, documents of record subject to the following conditions, facts and findings, location and use, obviously it's just factual information, sustainability, all planting materials are non-native species, a minimum of seventy.
Invasive.
Not invasive, sorry, non-native, yeah, thank you. And a minimum of 75% is, is native. Bike rack is installed as shown in the location of the approved plan. And then, and that was basically the end of those basic conditions. Site plan criteria that we go through for the site plan review. Number one, minimize use of wetlands, steep slopes, floodplains, and hilltops. I won't read it aloud, but obviously we talk about just the Sudbury River, but there's no, you know, we're pulling back from the, we're taking out some of the pavement and pulling back from the river, but otherwise there's no change into the, of the grading. Number two, minimize obstruction of scenic views. Planning Board finds that no scenic views to natural landscapes are present. Is everyone okay with that? There's, there's obviously the Sudbury River there.
But it's not obstructing.
I'm okay, but it's a little bit contradictory with three, because then we go around and talk about it. It's a unique natural feature present on the site, so.
Yeah, but a scenic view could be natural features or not, could be other type of.
And then a natural feature doesn't also mean a scenic view, but we can, if you want to propose an alteration, okay.
Can I go back to, we are not redoing the parking spots, right?
Yeah, we're re, we're pulling it, it's being pulled back. If you look at the. Yes, we're, it's being pulled.
Organizing the existing parking lot for efficiency and safety as well.
Yes. And it's being pulled back from the Sudbury River. So, so the parking spaces aren't as close to the river.
Thank you. When there are unique natural or historical features, just that due to the existing condition of the site and former use having been abandoned, is that abandoned?
Yeah, shouldn't we say vacant?
Abandoned or vacant.
Is abandoned different?
Can you go through your change for?
Yeah, it's just abandoned, instead of abandoned, or vacant. It sounds like there's a preference for vacant.
So Peter, we're going to need you here at number three.
Yeah.
Because we're reword, starting to reword some things.
What page is that?
Page four, top of page four, number three.
Just vacant.
So, in the second sentence, "Due to the existing condition of the site and former use having been vacant."
Vacant.
"For 10-plus years, the site has declined in curb appeal. With the newly proposed use and investment in the site, the Board finds the health of the natural features shall only increase and reestablish a unique natural environment." It's fine with me. Okay. Number four, minimize tree vegetation and soil, soil removal and grade changes. Planning Board finds there are few existing trees and other vegetation on the site, though some trees at the back property line would be retained. I think, yeah, I think there are trees like along the both back, there's some trees that are going to stay there, right, just along the edge. But the applicant is creating obviously new landscape, new landscaping along the riverbank and along the frontage of Union Street. So. I don't even know, is the grade changing at all? Because it's all, so that line we can take out, right? I think that's, I think that's.
The only thing they changed was in the front to get a little more.
Well, it's approved by the Conservation Commission, it's going to approve, they're going to depress it a little bit for the storage.
Okay, so that's why you let that in there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so it was, like you said, for the water storage?
For.
For conservation?
Yeah.
Okay. That sounds right. All right, people, please stop me if I don't look up every time. Number five, maximize open space retention. I think this one is just, I think that middle sentence can be taken out, right? Planning Board finds the current site includes no open space, which it really doesn't. I think the site is limited to roughly 8,000, 18,000 square feet can be taken out. I don't, I think that's, that's in facts and findings. Open space will be created through the noted landscaping improvements. I mean, we are deepening the area vegetation along the river. I believe there was mention somewhere along the line that maybe in the future there might be picnic tables there, but it's, I mean, do we?
I don't know that that's germane to that.
I don't think it necessarily is either. Would, would we just take out, out both lines and say that the current site includes no open space?
Yeah.
Okay.
The current site, okay.
Yeah, so there's nothing to retain, right? There's nothing really to. Yeah, yeah. So we could say the Planning Board finds the current site includes no open space and the point is not applicable to the site. Number six, screen objectionable features from neighboring properties and roadways. A new dumpster and enclosure will be installed along the rear property line. The enclosure will be made of wooded fencing material. I think it's actually, it's actually PVC, right?
Is it PVC?
Yeah, so you could change wooded to PVC, as shown in the approved plan, to screen the dumpster area from neighboring properties and public ways. Number.
And that's screened on all four sides, right?
Yeah.
Three sides and, and a gate.
And a gate.
Yeah, okay. Number seven, consideration shall be given to the impacts of the project on town services and infrastructure. Planning Board finds that the impacts of the project on town services and infrastructure has been considered and is not detrimental to the town. Number eight is about all the, obviously electric telephone cable, everything else. The Planning Board finds that all the above-mentioned items, if applicable, will be inspected and reused in their current locations. Number nine, exposed storage area, machinery, truck loading areas, again, objectionable features. All unsightly uses have been limited and are located at the rear of the building. I think we had noted that there's a few, just the, the back of house stuff is on the back of the building. And then re-noting the, sorry, where was I? The dumpster enclosure will be screened along the property line. Number 10, when applicable, the site plan will show measures to reduce and abate noise. Planning Board finds that the proposed use of a produce center, general store, I'd actually like to just to change that to what we have in the, a meat and produce market.
Meat and produce.
Just so it's consistent.
Yes.
So, that the proposed use of a meat and produce market creates no detriment to surrounding properties in terms of noise generation.
Can we say is not expected to? Because I mean, honestly, we, we don't know. Like it's been vacant for ten years and.
So, so the proposed use is not expected to create detriment to surrounding properties. I know it might get so popular that it's filled 24 hours a day.
Maybe we might throw a party in there.
You never know, so.
I said meat and produce center, right?
Yeah, I, it's, we said meat and produce market.
Market, okay.
In, in the rest of the document, so just to be consistent.
Proposed use of a produce market.
Let me know when you've caught up, Peter.
What was the exact word in you actually? It's predicted?
There were two things. Proposed use of a meat and produce market.
Yeah.
Is expected to create no detriment.
Is not expected.
Okay, is not expected to create.
Okay.
A detriment to surrounding properties. Thank you.
So the Planning Board finds that the proposed use of a meat produce market is not expected to create a detriment to the surrounding properties in terms of noise generation.
Perfect. All right, number 11, plans shall comply with all zoning requirements for parking, loading, signage, et cetera. The Planning Board finds that the site plan has been reviewed and accepted for compliance with all relevant zoning requirements. No waiver for any bylaw provision has been requested by the applicant. And finally, number 12, the site plan should be consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan and other applicable specific plans adopted by the Planning Board. Planning Board finds that the project is consistent with the 2003 comprehensive plan, which identified the need for economic development in the downtown core and creating a community destination that encourages pedestrian activity to a highly visible site that has been vacant for an extended period. Ever, it's fine, okay. All right, so special project conditions, we actually, right now we have no special project conditions. Everything is, special project conditions obviously are things that are not in the drawings, because the drawings are the project. You know, the things that can't be described in drawing form, I guess. Is there anything, I don't recall anything that we had to that effect? We may have, we talked about signage a little bit, because there's no, I don't think there's any documentation for the sign in the drawings, so there could be, we could have a condition that the sign shall meet all. The sign shall.
Sign should meet the bylaw?
Sign shall reflect what is shown in the.
Okay.
And meet the bylaw.
And meet the bylaw, yeah, so, yeah, so it's shown, it's shown in a drawing, but we don't have an idea of height or anything like that. Yeah, so it'll, it'll just have to be, I just have to make sure, it kind of looks like that and it, and it meets the bylaw as far as height and that kind of thing.
So quick question, is the sign to be self-illuminated or not?
I don't think there's any additional electrical being.
Okay, yeah. That would be something that design would, or the name, it would impact the name, it's right. So that has to be compliant with whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, I think lit signs are regulated under, under the bylaw.
So.
But it's, but it's also a commercial corner, right? There's no.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. Yeah.
For compliance, I think that would cover it.
Okay.
There is number 50, the gas station.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's all. Yeah, all commercial parking lot buses.
Okay, so I said signage, signage shall reflect the approved renderings and follow the Ashland signage zoning code.
Sounds fine to me. Is that what it's called in the bylaws, the zoning code?
It is actually section on my bylaws, but I believe it's section five of the zoning code. I can actually pull it up and.
I'm just curious as to what it.
It's a separate bylaw, but it's under the direction of the Building Commissioner.
Is that we just don't usually say zoning code and that's, that's the term versus zoning bylaw, Ashland zoning bylaws? So that's why I'm wondering if codes should just be bylaws, but is, is that how we've referred to it in the bylaws? What?
We don't have.
We have ordinances, no.
No. I don't know what the differences between all these different terms that are used kind of similarly, but.
And bylaws, the universal, like.
Yeah. Now we can also go back to, if you can look that up, Peter? I don't, I didn't see the, I didn't see the cow on the new renderings, is that?
We might replace that couple of like cannons, you know.
So it, it seems like it's, I didn't see it in the picture anymore. It was always kind of hiding to the side.
You found none, right?
And then the rest are, and we'll come back to exactly what that, what we want that term to be.
I'm just going to write bylaw.
Okay.
There's only bylaw.
It sounds better to me, I'm just not used to saying zone, that, code. But I think the only things I was wondering in the. Some of the things I was wondering in the, the typical things is about parking on the street. I think on number 18, construction procedures, there'll be no parking, parking or standing of vehicles on Chestnut Street or Union Street or other off-site locations. But then when it, in further down in the paragraph, it only says Union Street, Union Street. So it probably should have Chestnut Street.
Yeah, if a truck must unload on the site or on Chestnut Street when required.
Seven will be in those, I, in number 20, it refers to condition 22.
Right, yeah.
But I think that's, I think it might actually be condition four, I think it's.
I think it's, it's about actually night work, so it's referring to. So work can't go on past 7:00 PM unless. So, work can't go on past seven P.M., unless, it's, it's, it's about night work, which is actually condition nineteen. So, I think we should really just correct that and always just have it deferred to something, or like to say, um... Because this comes up every time we change the, the numbering, right?
So, I think with eighteen, if I go back to this quickly, when the construction is taking place, we're not really allowing unloading of vehicles or trucks on Union Street, which is one thirty-five. So, if you're gonna have to do that, you're gonna have to do that on Chestnut Street, right? However, in the event that you do have to unload on Union Street, you just notify the town of Ashland, uh, the police department, but also otherwise, you would ask you to do it on non-peak hours. So, after nine A.M., Monday through Friday. Which is just commuter times.
So, and then on...
Yeah.
So, and then on number twenty, because it, it refers to condition twenty-two?
I just changed that to nineteen.
Okay, that's fine. So, in the future, we'll take out the specific reference and then say something like approved night work or something like that, so we never have to always to watch that condition again. But we'll fix that in the future, alright? So, um... Any other questions on that? So, then is there any further discussion about the project in general? Or the conditions in approval document specifically? Alright, then, I think we, the first thing we need to do is a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the six Chestnut Street application.
Actually, um...
Are you gonna do public comment?
Yeah, hold on just one minute for that, and I will just, before we do that, I will allow public comment, if any. We have a few people online, so if there's any public comment, you can raise your hand.
Those are off of the next two applications.
Okay. Alright, seeing none?
Then I make a motion again to close the, the hearing on the six Chestnut Street application.
Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
And a roll call vote?
Dipa Wengitai.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So, the public hearing is closed. We can, at this time, have further conduct, further discussion, now that the hearing is closed. But if there's no further discussion, we can move to...
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the application for six Chestnut Street with the amendments agreed upon tonight.
And a second?
Second, ma'am.
And a roll call vote?
Dipa Wengitai.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So, that, six Chestnut Street has been approved. So, thank you.
I, I wanna thank you, because it's really nice to see that somebody's interested in, in investing in Ashland, and especially in a property that has been vacant, and has a lot of potential, but I guess nobody has, find the way to exploit that potential. So, I wish you a lot of luck, and hopefully, you have a very successful business.
Thank you.
And you know the next question is, when are you gonna be open? Because people have been talking about it, so...
We would be open yesterday, but, you know, I've got some work to do. We appreciate all the work that you guys put in as well, all the time and, uh, working with us with all the changes as well.
Well, you know, it's been kind of a long process, both with your, with your architects and various delays, but we're very happy to see it moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, the guidance was very clear, and again, thank you to everybody involved.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, guys, we'll get this decision going, and we'll file that with the clerk, and we'll get this thing going, and we'll call you.
You guys?
Alright, next week.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good luck, Tricia.
Alright, moving forward, next on our agenda is one fifty-one Main Street. Again, we have, let's see, on a, the draft approval document under tab two, and there's a second set of drawings under the first set, that is for the one fifty-one Main Street taproom. So, do you wanna bring those drawings up, Peter?
Yep.
Are you all caught up with the other modifications? Okay. Okay. Alright, so on these documents...
Uh, just Tom, Leonard, Peter, to John, John Maldun, John, I made you a co-host, so you can now unmute yourself. Alan Waite, I also made you a co-host, so you can unmute yourself.
And is, did one of you want to give us an update on where things are? We do have the drawings in front of us, but if you wanted to do that, we're totally welcome to hear, hear your statement.
Sure, I believe last time you asked for clarification on the rendering versus the blueprint. One of the issues was the front planter boxes being consecutive in the rendering, but not in the blueprint, so we changed that to, so that way it was consistency. And the same thing with the side door. I believe the side door in the rendering did not have a side light, and the side door on the blueprint did, so we changed the rendering to align together. And believe that was it. And then there were some further clarifications on the patio up front, that somebody had asked for, provided an example of what was done at TJ's, and I believe the architect went back and made those changes to better reflect what was going on with the front patio.
So, I think the other, the one other question, I think that was out there was the question about the doors, the new... Sorry, the, the new glass doors swinging into the sidewalk, was that, I think that was something that...
That was clarified with Doug before, actually, prior to the last meeting. And one of the doors is stationary, non, not opening, but large enough to meet ADU requirements.
So, it doesn't matter that it, it doesn't matter that it swings into the sidewalk, because it's being accessible from the parking spaces?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you for that, forgot about that part. Nice memory.
Alright, we'll go through the same process first, if anyone has any questions specifically related to the drawings or renderings, or in what you see there. Actually, so, these are the, I was gonna say, I know I saw some renderings that you sent around, so those are the, the renderings are up on the screen.
Yep.
That's right, those are pretty much the same as last time. The blueprint changed just to reflect, so that way it's tied together and clarify that the planting in the front will be, uh, the boxes will be consecutive versus initially, there was gonna be some spacing, but for safety, we said, uh, just make them consecutive.
And I think on the side elevation, it shows the pair of glass doors, I think with side lights, right, that are consistent, yeah, that look like the plan as well?
Yep.
Okay.
And is the work, um...
On the existing overhead doors that is, and the plan says to remain, is the glazing of the doors new scope, or this is the way the doors are? I thought the doors are opaque, is it not? Maybe they're not.
Uh, you mean, you mean the garage doors?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we're gonna try to save them. They function totally fine, they do need to be weatherized and cleaned and, and refinished, and we're optimistic that we can keep them as they are. But if we have to replace them, we'll replace them with something very similar.
His question was that the current doors are already glass, is that right?
Yeah.
They do? Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly how they look now, so we just, in the Photoshop, change the color ring on them.
Peter, can you go to the side elevation?
Yep.
Because that's showing a lot more glass than what's actually drawn. There is no... There's no glazing for the drawings above the doors, this is showing that. So, what are the...
You mean the transom?
Yeah, the transom light is not in the drawings, but it is here in this rendering. And it doesn't look like the drawing is showing this in one inactive leaf as well.
The blueprint?
Yeah, um...
Well, that could be in the door schedule, if they have a door schedule.
I believe it does.
Door schedule doesn't show that it's got the transom window, the elevations don't show that as well. There's a door elevation.
I wanna see the door schedules.
Oh, here. Exterior door front.
Oh, is it? Oh, yeah.
Is it in there? I'm trying to find it, I blew this off before.
It's on page eight point six two one.
Thank you.
So, there's a, the picture of the exterior door front, double hollow metal frame, um, but it doesn't...
Yeah, just missing the transom, because it obviously is trying to align with the head of the windows. And we wanna make sure that it aligns, right? Like it's shown here, this looks nice.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess it's just what, what's the, I guess, is what's the intention? I mean, um... So, again, the question is that the renderings are showing a transom above the doors, but the drawings on that just does not show a transom.
Uh, there'll be no transom.
No transom, okay.
No, that was an oversight by me.
Yeah, and I get, I get the alignment, but the lower alignment is also to the upper level of the...
Yeah, oh, to, to the...
To the cottage, kinda double hung.
Yeah, okay.
So, um...
So, are there any part of the record?
Yes.
So, we can, we can just ask them to just, for the record, adjust it, or it can be just noted? I mean, it's not a change to the project, it's just a detail.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable just noting it versus going back and changing a rendering versus an architectural drawing, that's fine.
If, does that have a, like, an identifiable thing, like the issue with this? It's just, does it have a date, a number, or anything? Because that's, makes it a little bit harder to make the record. That's...
Well, this, this plan does.
Yeah, all the plans are dated.
Yeah, actually, we could, we could note that, um...
Yeah, that the design is gonna be per the drawings dated X.
Yeah, the date, I would just, I would just, I would just reference the detail in the, in the architectural design. Yeah, in the design set. And we can put that as a special condition rather than the rendering. Just for clarification.
Yeah, it's, it's not that big a deal, it's just for clarity.
Yeah.
So, do we wanna go through, do they have any other questions on this? Do we, should we go through the criteria, and then obviously, people can still ask questions about the drawings as they come up? So, we're under tab two this time. Obviously, documents of record. And these have revision date of June thirteenth, that's what's on my plan in front of me. Um, and the renderings, renderings, architectural renderings revised and submitted by the applicant on June thirteenth describes the two, the two renderings. But we can do the same thing there, we can...
I'm gonna have to, I'll, I'll grab the date stamper, and we can stamp those in.
For this, for this date, June thirteenth. Follow the same procedure. So, again, if we're looking at documents of record submitted to the documents of record subject to the following conditions, facts and findings, we have location and use, again, basic information about location, size, and proposed use, sustainability, all planting materials are non-invasive, with a minimum of seventy-five percent of the material is native species. And a bike rack shall be installed at a location agreed upon by, upon with the town. So, and I don't know if that had been determined yet, right, like where that, where the bike rack should be? I don't know if... Is... Sorry, is that right?
That's right.
Yeah, I think...
There was some suggestions to put it on the front, and it's kinda, initially, in the, at initial conversations, the bike rack was gonna be in front, but I think at that point, patio was not as extended. And then upon feedback from some folks, we extended the patio out greater to better incorporate the downtown, which then took the location of the bike rack away, so now we have to find another spot.
And just to note, obviously, it's the town's responsibility to do future planning with the police building, so I think that's part of the situation, is, okay, now the town has to see what we wanna do with that police station, how that's gonna be designed out, than to add that bike rack. Right now, the police station, they're, they're, they're pulling the final content out of there, and then the planning, then the town will be able to kinda make the next step, just to move forward.
So, there's no current plan for that building?
Uh, no, not at this point.
So, we're saying that then, the responsibility of that bike rack would have to wait until the town decides what to do there, but they will install it, or they will install it...
I think we'll work together on it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Team effort.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable leaving the bike rack until we have more information about the site as a whole, since it still is town-owned. It's town-owned property being leased and not, you know, not being sold. So, I'd rather have it looked at as a big picture rather than piecemeal, for me. But we have in here that a bike rack will be going in at some point.
That makes sense for us as a business.
Do we need to specify with the town, is it the building commissioner, is it the planning board, is it select board? Because there is no town, small T, that can agree...
Specify what?
A bike rack shall be installed at a location agreed upon with the town.
Oh, like who should make, does it need to be coming back to us, you mean?
But it would depend on the select board, because the decision on the police station is the select board.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying, but I just think it's not set up for like who, right? I never know who is supposed to agree. And we do get in trouble when we make decisions that infects other boards.
But, but in this case, I'm just thinking, it may make sense, because the town is leasing, so it would be, they are a tenant, so it'd be with the landlord, which is the town.
It probably should just be capital T, Town of Ashland, then at least, at the very minimum.
Because the town is having a contract with them, so it is the town.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, like, I mean, I would, I would, I would hate for a bike rack to come back in front of the planning board, right?
I mean, me too, but I just, I just want it enforceable, is the issue, not...
Yes, that, um...
I think it makes sense that it's developed with the police station planned, so it is safe and is once and for all, right?
Okay. Okay, um, site plan review criteria, very similar to the other project, obviously. Minimize use of wetlands, steep slopes, floodplains, and hilltops, really none of those on the site. Just said, except for the driveway slope, the current site is flat and almost completely covered by existing buildings and asphalt... Just said, except for the driveway slope. The current site is flat and almost completely covered by existing buildings and asphalt parking lots. Doesn't contain the other things. Minimize obstruction of scenic views. The planning board finds that no scenic views to natural landscape are present. Views to downtown Ashland are being maintained through the use of glass garage doors and the creation of outdoor patio on the front of the building. Three, preserve unique, natural, and historic features. The planning board finds there are no unique natural features present on the site. Historic, the historic exterior elevations of the fire station are being preserved in accordance with the lease agreement with limited modifications related to the building's change of use. Number four, minimize tree vegetation and soil removal and grade changes. Planning board finds there are few existing trees and other vegetation on the site, though existing trees of the back, at the back property line will be retained. The applicant shall maintain the existing front landscaping area and shall add vegetation to the site while trimming existing shrubs. I think there's just a word missing there. In adding, or... While trimming existing shrubs and adding vegetation as appropriate, I think is supposed to be. No soil will be removed from the site. The grade, the grade of the site will change slightly as the front patio area is made flat. Again, interrupt me, because I'm not always looking up. Number five, maximize open space retention. The planning board finds that the current site contain, includes no open space. Open space will be created through the addition of a front patio for outdoor recreation and gatherings associated with the new use. Number six, screen objectionable features from neighboring properties and roadways. A new dumpster at the back edge of the site will be screened from neighboring properties using fencing with vertical slats. So we had, at one point, we had a, a diagram with the general location of that, of that dumpster.
Yeah, we submitted that in the last, in the most recent packet.
And that's in the, that's in the, um...
It's in the document.
It's in the list, document list. Oh, yeah, here it is. Number K. One fifty-one dumpster street location.
It won't be visible from the street.
It's gonna be very hidden, the back behind that building. Ah, trying to find where I was. Okay. Number seven, consideration shall be given to the impacts of the project on town services and infrastructure. Planning board finds that the impacts of the project on town services and infrastructure has been considered and is not detrimental to the town. Number eight, this is about all the electric telephone cable. Planning board finds that all of the above-mentioned items, if applicable, will be inspected and reused in their current locations. Number nine, exposed storage areas, machinery, service areas. All unsightly uses are located in the back of the building. The new dumpster will be screened and located in the back of the property near the railroad track. Number ten, when applicable, the site plan shall show measures to reduce and abate noise generated from the site. Planning board finds that the proposed use of a tap room creates no detriment to surrounding properties in terms of noise generation. Am I okay with that, what it stated?
I think we should stick to the other one, is not expected to, because we, we didn't ask for any, um, sound, noise studies or anything, so...
All right. Number eleven, site plan shall comply with all zoning requirements for parking, loading, signage. The planning board finds that the site plan has been reviewed and accepted for compliance with all relevant zoning requirements. No waiver for any bylaw provision has been requested by the applicant. Number twelve, the site plan shall be consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan. Planning board finds the project is consistent with the two thousand three comprehensive plan, which identified the need for economic development in the downtown core and, and creating a community destination that encouraged pedestrian activity. In this case, just to, um... Sorry, just because it mentioned signage, in this case, all the signage is, is on the building. Is that right? There is no, there is no sign out on the street.
That's correct.
Because it's kind of, it's kind of right there.
Painted, no?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to, yeah. Okay.
So is there a spec for, because it's a town-owned building, the quality of signage on town property? Is there anything that we need to define? Because it's not owned by them. It's a town property, and signage on the building is on the brick.
I, I, I think, uh, that was addressed in one of the presentations, and I think they agreed in the contract that they would be allowed to paint it, and that they would be kind of washable, if you will.
It's removable, correct.
Cleanable.
Well, John, can you explain that a little bit more? Is that possible?
I'm sorry, I had a, I had a hard time hearing that.
Oh, we said a question about the paint that you're gonna use on the, on, on painting the signs on the brick. And I know in the, in a previous presentation, we talked about how it's a special kind of paint that is removable.
Yeah, uh, it's common, I forget exactly what it was, but it was common exterior paint that can be power washed off, not without, you know, like anything else that requires effort, but, uh, it can be power washed off and scrubbed off. Um, and we did agree to that, and I thought there was something, I was trying to listen intently, and I thought, I heard somebody mentioning something about a sign saying the building was town-owned, too. Did I catch that right, too?
Yeah, the building is gonna be, it's obviously a lease agreement.
No, totally, yeah, I, but I, I think at one point, somebody had mentioned that there was to be a plaque saying, I don't remember the exact language, but...
Yeah, that's, that was a separate issue. We're talking about the signage on, like painted on the building.
Sorry, it was hard to hear. Um, yeah, so the, I forget what the exact material is of the paint, but we did agree, and it is possible, uh, common, really, for, uh, the paint to be removed once we're done. I mean, you see it everywhere, whole world.
So...
Power washed and scrubbed off.
Yeah, and there's no other, there's no other attached signing on the, on the building?
Nope.
Right. So, I mean, um, it was, I remember it was in a memorandum or a document that they provided to us that described that. Um, I don't know if that document is listed.
And, uh, what's her name? Let's keep in her name.
Beth.
Uh, Beth.
Beth.
She, she, when she spoke on that presentation, she mentioned that they had discussed it, and it was in the agreement, and they were comfortable with it.
Oh, in the lease agreement?
Yeah. Uh, that's what I remember. She, she said that she specifically addressed that.
Do we want to refer to that in this sentence here? In, or in this section?
I was just...
I just, we can make a special condition?
Not as a special condition, just that...
That has been agreed on the lease with...
Because it's a brick facade.
Yeah.
And none of us have seen that paper.
Yeah, it's fine.
Makes sense to me.
It's just a reference. It doesn't have to be any more complicated than that.
Whatever works for you. Sounds good.
Do I do a preserve unique and natural or historical features?
Yeah, so actually, on the document, it's attached to the very last document under tab two. So the, there's the application for planning board approval, and there's a document stapled to it that says renovation of one fifty-one Main Street Fire Station. Is that considered the narrative?
Uh, yes.
So on the second page, on the back page of that, it says, "Sign logic will help paint Clover Road Brewing Company on the brick with the colors previously noted." Um, under the bullet points, the paint can be removed with paint stripper. It's effective on brick. Yeah, so it talks about being removed. I think that's all it says.
And that's dated January fourth.
So is that included in our...
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Application, including in a... Oh, is that the, is that the project narrative?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, project narrative. I would call this a project narrative.
Well, this is labeled renovation of one fifty-one Main Street Fire Station, ren, yeah.
Yeah.
So that document is referred to...
It's part of it.
Yep.
Is that...
That works.
That works?
Yeah.
Okay.
And having said that, as well as any other information, I hope we'll have to probably make sure that during the design process, nothing else changed from this page.
No.
Yeah, I don't... I don't see anything.
Yep.
Okay.
So under that, I think it was you or the applicant, but do we want to put the, um, potential to allow that, um, potential historic signage on the building? Because I don't think that's in the lease.
It's not.
So I think that we should put that in here if we...
But why would we put it if it's, it's not an agreement, and it's not a condition, and it's not in the lease? That would be a, um, a fabrication. I mean, unless there is a, a condition.
Well, I'm saying we could consider a condition, which I believe they agreed to, like...
No, it was discussed.
Yeah, it's totally fine.
Yeah, but what is the, what are we asking for? Like, we certainly don't...
It was, Anna made the, I think, the suggestion that, because it's a historical building, that there would be a plaque, but also she said that could be inside the building and there some type of mural or something addressing that this is a historic fire station.
I think we landed that it would be like up to the town to like...
Yeah, like, they're not gonna do it. We're gonna, we're saying there, it's similar to, um, the nine to forty-nine. I'm allowing you to do this on this wall that I own, the mural. I'm allowing you, if it happens.
Yeah, they don't own it.
Yeah.
In fact, the town still occupies part of it.
I, I think it would model the waters, and it's not, I, I think the possibility, the town can, the town can always allow that. It's, it's the town's building. They're, they're not in control of it.
I mean, they are as a leaseholder.
Uh, yeah, there, there's some nuance to that.
Yeah.
Uh, it depends on the space. Like, you can't... Uh, not to be argumentative about it, but like you couldn't go in and one of our main walls...
Yeah, no, exactly. Understood. It has to be part of the lease agreement, basically, if they are allowed to...
Right. But I think initially, I didn't, I don't recall a mural, or recall somebody asking to put a sign up.
Yeah, or a picture or something. It was just a recognition of the building, but it was, it was a discussion in passing. I'm, 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 I'm just...
Totally.
I'm, 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 I'm just hesitant to start putting, inventing these requirements for something that is not germane to what this project, the merits of the application, and just start coming up with ideas on our own. I just don't like that.
Yeah, well, two things. One, um, is that there's no way we can require anything on the inside of the building. That would be just completely inappropriate for the planning board. Thing number two is that the, the town still owns the building, right, and in fact, still will keep, keep occupying, they're gonna, the town is going to keep occupying the second floor of the building as storage space, right? It's a shared building, um, even, even during the lease. Isn't that, that's correct, right? You've already moved a whole bunch of stuff over there.
That is correct. A lot of planning board files actually live up to this.
So, um, and the third thing is that this should, this signage, I think it'd be, it should, it'd be great to have them, but it needs to be a signage effort across the town, marking, a consistent signage effort, marking all of our historic buildings in a consistent way, and not something that should be created, obviously, special to go on this building, in my mind.
It becomes capricious. I mean, it should involve the historical commission. It should involve, uh...
I think that's exactly where we landed. The last time we discussed it was that it should be part of like a larger effort with the historical commission.
That would be good.
So...
I could be, I thought that that's sort of, this, I, I remember this conversation of helping with very similarly.
Okay. So...
You guys have such a good memory.
Don't include me in that.
Well, it's better than me.
So is this, um, so is this, is there consensus by the board, but that, that this is something we don't want to add in as a special project condition at this time?
I, I don't support it.
I don't, too.
Okay. All right, so...
I love the idea. I guess they should...
Oh, yeah. I think we all love the idea.
Yeah.
But not as a part of this particular agreement.
I'm on board with that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
To make something...
To do a whole town, like a downtown signage?
Well, they already started that, right? They put some historical signage. They started something, but it has not kind of sink in. It should.
Yes.
And the lease agreement is for how long? Just...
Uh, it's, go ahead, Peter.
I think it's three, John, correct me if I'm wrong. I, I'm speaking out of turn if I, if I try to make up the numbers, but I believe it's three years with extension, with extensions?
No, but I'm so glad that I remember something that you don't. Uh, it's five years.
Five years, okay.
It's five years, yeah, with, I believe, four extensions.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we can move on? Okay, um, so, so then I think we have no special project conditions, right? So that, that can be taken out? And in the general project conditions, did anyone note anything that needs tweaking? Again, these are the general things, um, but street names, um, this one only has one street to consider, which makes it easier. I don't think I noted anything further.
Because that's a condition preference, but...
I'm sorry? Oh, right, that's one. Right. That's condition twenty-two.
Sorry, Peter.
It's all right.
No, we'll, we'll correct, we need, our general template, we'll correct that so it never refers to a number.
Can we just, some of those simplify to and say public streets, so we don't always have to correct, like you can't track out onto the public streets? And then we don't always have to...
It's a good point. Yeah, I can change it. We can change that up, yeah.
Yeah, these are the types of things I want to start going through, like that this should be, this should be easier.
Yes. We're getting there.
Yeah, getting there. So I'll, I'll make a note of that, too. So, okay. Anything else that people have to bring up at this time? All right. Then I will, um, open it up to public comment, should anyone want to make any? Feeling okay, Mark? All right, uh, anyone online? All right, seeing no hands. We would, I believe, if everyone agrees, we would be ready to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing for one fifty-one Main Street Site Plan Approval.
I'll second.
And roll call vote?
Deboengadai.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzeg, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So, um, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further comment on this project? All right, then I will entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion for approval for site, site plan approval for one fifty-one Main Street.
I'll second.
And a roll call vote?
Deboengadai.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzeg, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that project is approved. And Kate has the next question. When will it be open?
When is it gonna be?
Uh, Alan, why don't you answer that one? I think we're planning, uh, I'm gonna say September. We're hoping for earlier, but I'm gonna say September.
All right. Ready for Oktoberfest?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so, um, Peter, obviously, we'll take care of all the...
Yeah, we'll, we'll sign all the decisions after the meeting, and then, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll be in contact, John. And Alan.
I appreciate it. Thank you guys for working through this with us.
Thanks. I know it's been a long process for you. I hope you know, I, I think you knew that we were in support of the project, and we were just waiting for the right documentation.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you were leading the blind, so thank you for that.
All right, well, wish you a productive summer.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Oh, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, moving on. Our third public hearing is thirteen Joanne Drive. These are the, um, solar panels at Joanne Drive. The, let's see, new drawings, I think, can be found at the, on the bottom part of the eleven by seventeen sheets. And Peter, do we, um... And Peter, do we, does someone want to speak?
Yeah, so tonight, we have Mark Donahoe. Mark, you are now a co-host, so please feel free to unmute yourself. I have met Mark out on the site on a number of occasions. Tricia and I have visited the site a number of occasions. Mark met with the Design Review Committee last Tuesday night, and we did get a report. Mark, I haven't had time to send it to you, but it was positive. They did close their hearing. I believe in your packet, you will find that report. And then the other big thing is that also, we have, since, since this applicant was, applicant was in, in front of us, we have verified some of the, the property lines, the locations of equipment, and, and we've also provided a landscaping plan. Just a note, the fire department verbally, and I've been working with Mark, they are asking for one more swift analysis plan to look for the, to the entrance. It is here, there's one here. Yep, there's one here, but they're actually asking to, to see the, the turn of, of the truck going in front of Building 20, making the other, making a left, making a right-hand turn. Yes. Just to see how they could enter the front of that building. Correct. So, at this point, obviously, this project's moving along. Mark, I'll, I'll pass the microphone to you. You can give update from your standpoint and from your team on where things stand, and, and ask any questions or comments.
Certainly. Good evening, members of the board. Mark Donahoe from Echo Smart Solutions, representing the landlord of 13 Joanne Drive. We did successfully get through our review with the Design Review Committee on Tuesday night. And I, Peter, could you put the plans up on the screen? I just wanted to show some of the equipment locations that, that were not shown properly on the plan last time I was before this board.
Yep. It's, hold on a second. Okay, Mark, here is the proposed plans.
Thank you. Can you go to page two, please? And could you zoom in to the top part of this plan? You will see at the top part of the plan, there are three cir, the top circle on the right is the, is the existing telephone pole along the street. And then the other two circles represent new telephone poles that will be installed by EverSource. Sorry, guys. The, the heat wave just passed, and we've got a thunder shower going on here. One of those telephone poles is along the street, and the other one, quote, you know, as you go into the property, is located along the strip of land in between the parking and the property line. The wiring goes underground from there down. Peter, could you move further down? I want to focus on the red boxes on the screen. Those were not physically the right size the last time I, I was in front of you. I had them adjusted. And if you could please just zoom in a little bit? The square box is the concrete pad that the EverSource transformer will be located on. And that will have bollards at each corner of the front, so that no cars can drive into it. And then the second red rectangular, long, thin rectangular box is a strip of equipment that is associated, sorry, associated with the canopy. So, the canopy, any of the solar systems have inverter boxes and electric panels associated with them. And those will be placed along, on our property, but along near the existing stockade fence. And these are properly sized to the plan. Peter, if you want to go further down, just to show the, the canopies. Canopies have not changed in any, in any way. I do owe, I do owe the fire department the revision to the plan that I was, that Peter called me on, on Tuesday afternoon, and I'm, that's pending. They want to see the fire truck parked in front, sorry. They want to see the fire truck parked in, in front of Building 20, and show that the ladder can swing appropriately in that 20 feet of space in between the parking spaces and the canopy. I don't have any reason to believe that it can't, but I'm waiting for the engineer's plan. As part of my design review, we looked at the location of the electrical components that I just described that are shown in the red areas, both the transformer and the electric panels associated with the canopy. The Design Review Committee, depending on where, if it's located the way it's shown on the plan, they would like to see a stockade fence, six-foot-tall stockade fence built in front of that to screen it from the neighbors, from the apartments that would look out onto that area, which we have agreed to do. They, we also talked about potentially moving that around the corner on the other fence line. I think there's a tree in the way, so I'm not, I'm not sure that works. But I did, I did tell the committee that I would look into it. I actually prefer that other location, but I don't think it can, I'm not sure that it can work for this. But I'm going to be working, I have to get EverSource's approval for that. So, we, we, we got, what I was told I was getting was a conditional approval of the location shown here, so long as I have a stockade fence put up in front of it. And if it goes around the corner, I don't need a stockade fence, but I can use, but I need bollards to protect, protect it from cars. And I'm uncertain right at this time, unless, until I speak to EverSource, if I can, if I can change the location as it's shown. Does anybody have any questions about that before I move on?
Any questions? No questions.
Great. I was gonna shift to the landscaping plan, unless someone has a question about the, about the canopy itself. It's galvanized steel. You know, there was a question during design review about the color, but it's galvanized, just like the galvanized structure of your canopies at your high school. And that satisfied the committee. So, I didn't know if, I just wanted to mention that. Then we presented a landscape architect's, architecture, landscape plan. And I just wanted to briefly touch on that. So, there are three islands that have old, very old crabapple trees, half-dead, one fully dead. And we're, we're pulling those out. We can't put anything back in those locations because they'll, it will interfere with the canopy. So, we're locating three new trees, showing on the bottom-left side as those circles, along that strip of landscaping, along the drive aisle. Those are red maples. And then the other islands are going to be getting a certain, you know, the, the plants shown on the plan, they're all, they're 100% native species, as was requested by the committee. And that is the plan for landscaping. I know we, we spoke last, we talked about the lighting underneath the canopy and, and whatnot, so I'm not sure if there are any further questions regarding that. But I don't have, these are all the things that have happened since I last spoke to you. Otherwise, the plan is the same. And other than the fire department's request, I, I'm available for questions, but I don't, I, I'm, this is everything that we've covered with the town.
Thank you, Mark.
I saw the Design Review Committee's notes come through my email, but did, did that get, I don't see it in the binder. Did that get printed out?
That did not get printed out. I apologize.
I, I haven't, I just haven't, didn't have time to look at it, so I thought... Are you bringing it up? We're gonna print it, or...
Yeah, I'm just gonna stop my screen share for a second. I'll pull those up. I'm, I apologize. Those were from Kevin.
Did anyone else had, did anyone have a chance to look at the Design Review Committee?
I did look at it. I mean, it's, it covered the planting stuff. The, they had a good point, I think, about the galvanizing, that there's different between, like, you just buy the post-galvanizing or like a kind of galvanizing paint. And they made a point about considering the durability of that.
Was hogged galvanized?
I, I think, well, they, they, I think the report to the, one at the school appears to be like some other coating in addition to. And then there was probably, I think the applicant agreed, but conditioned to your point of like this glare back to apartments, and they would put some kind of glare reset screening on the, on the windows. So, there was some good stuff like that, that I think, I think...
We, 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 sorry, we did explore the question of glare at the design committee, and it was their opinion that that would not be an issue. We did offer to, so the, the apartments in question, there are four apartments in question on the end of Building 19 to the south of the Canopy 1 that could potentially, I mean, we're not sure that it's going to have an issue, but we could put a, I don't want to call it a tinted film on those, but they have all different kinds of film that they put on windows now to deal with sun and glare and other issues. And we could certainly do that in those apartments, either ahead of time or as those tenants might call for it. We don't think there's going to be a glare issue, but we, we would be more than willing to do that.
It seems like something that could be written as a special condition, that at least it's offered to the, you know, to the residents. You know, maybe they'd prefer to have more light and not, less tint, you know, that's, but depending on, depending on the resident. Is there any further, I don't know, do you know, do you know what, what the conversation was about the gal, galvanization of the...
Well, the galvanizing, galvanizing steel is, the steel is dipped, you know, at the factory.
So, it's not applied, it's dipped?
It's not, it's not an application. It's dipped steel. And everything along the eastern seaboard, all of these are built with galvanized steel so that, because they don't want to have maintenance issues with painting, you know, constantly having to scrape and paint them every six years, seven years.
Right. Right, okay. So, that's what they were...
This says on 618, applicant noted material will be galvanized steel because painted material tends to chip in the future in this, in, and is a maintenance concern. Sample images were presented at the, of the Ashland High School solar canopy structure, which are light gray in a uniform color. If the proposed canopies are to be finished similar to the high school, the DRC finds this is to be acceptable. However, it shall be noted that galvanized steel is of the texture below and not present, and not presented as the intended finish.
So, it sounds like, is there some disagreement about what the, what the posts look like at the high school? I don't remember, frankly. I mean...
When I, when I talked to Peter about it, and, and he explained that, that those, those were not painted, I went over and took pictures of it and shared those pictures in our, you know, Alvaro shared those pictures on my call on Tuesday night.
And, and you, you agree that they're not painted, it's just a finish?
It appears to just be galvanized steel to me.
Okay. I mean, it is what, 20, how old is that? Those are at least 10 years old.
I think that building is 2000 and...
But the panels went up after the building?
The panels went up af, I think that building was 2000, early 2000s, right? 2003, 2004, and then the panels may, must have went up over, after. And then also, visiting the VFW site, which has the solar panels there, too, that is also galvanized steel.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, too.
It is the standard. We don't, as landlords, we don't want to introduce a maintenance item to the, to the, to the structural steel.
Agreed. I see a hand raised. Is that someone?
Yeah, so we do have a hand raised, if we want to take public comment.
Oh, is that public comment?
Yep.
Let's, let's wait for public comment until we're, we're through with our discussion.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other comments from the board? Because I think where we would be on this is that we're waiting for one thing from the fire department. We need, we need a draft document.
We need a draft decision, correct.
Which obviously will be, we, we've done one of these before, but will be, you know, so that kind of be our base, but we, obviously, we'll go through it the same. We can go briefly through the criteria. If you find it useful, if there's anything extraordinary here. Otherwise, Peter and I can put together that draft decision, as always, and, and send it out and just go through it like we did the other two today. It depends on where you want to put your time, I guess, or if we need more time maybe to discuss other things.
These type of projects are pretty straightforward. I, I don't find anything in particular, other than the things that have been raised.
No, I mean, the, the electrical stuff, like, so that apartment complex has a lot of kids, and I feel like we might want to discuss protection of it, whether, I, I think, you know, the applicant said they liked the move location as well, but it is electrical equipment, you know, and, and I, I just wonder if that needs some consideration.
How...
But I'm sure this is tamper-proof. I mean, this, this equipment is not, I mean, it's not that you can open the panel.
This equipment is, this equipment gets, sorry, the, the equipment boxes get padlocked? So that they cannot be opened?
I mean, it's not different than what you see in every neighborhood that has this street.
Oh, no, I mean, like, sometimes they put it behind a chain-link fence, but if they're locked, then that's fine. I, that's, okay.
So, so I guess the question...
They need some protection one way or another.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
So, I guess the question is that the equipment, as installed, will be fully, fully protected from the tamperings of neighborhood children, which I agree, there are a lot of kids up there.
Yeah, so these are, these are basically boxes, right? And they all have, they all have a padlock at the bottom to, so that they can be locked, so they cannot be opened.
So, including everything that's mounted on the, mounted on the new fence? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, then I will open it up to public comment.
Here, having no hands in the room, there's one online. R. James Taylor Lane. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself right now. Please step forward to the microphone.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to clarify something about galvanizing, since it's partly my job. These are gonna be, the, the poles you have are ASTM A123, which is a bath of liquid zinc that causes it to be corrosively resistant. However, if you have a lot of children in the area and they start to nick and scrape it, ala trying to break in or cut through, you're gonna start to see the degrading of all of the protective measures you have put into place.
What, what, what is the alternative?
There isn't one.
So the, the boxes, though, that we're talking about aren't, the electrical boxes aren't galvanized, right?
They're not galvanized. The structural steel columns that hold up the canopy system, just like at the high school, are galvanized.
Okay.
Nobody's going to be scratching in them to break in, because you can walk all around them. They're, they're not, they're not secured. They're right in the middle of the parking lot.
Yeah, I see. I think, I think there's a question about the, the two different things we had, so, but thank you for that information. And seeing no other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. So are there any, are there any, is there anything else we need to let this applicant know for anything we need besides the fire department final approval before we look at the draft decision, which I would assume we would be doing next week?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I can have that out, I can have that out to the planning board fairly shortly. We do have a meeting next, our normal fourth, for Thursday is gonna be, excuse me, our normal second meeting of the month is actually next, next week, but.
All right. Okay, so seeing no other questions? We'll look to continue this until next week?
Okay. Well, thank, Mark, you and I, we can continue to work together on this, and we'll move, hopefully move things along.
And, and the hearing then would be next week that I, that I would attend?
Yeah, next week is gonna be the twenty-seventh.
Understood.
And I just wanna make sure all the planning board members, because this meeting was supposed to be held last week.
Oh, yeah, just, sorry.
You're gonna.
Do you need, do you need this to talk about scheduling before we make a motion to close the?
I do not. I just wanna make sure everyone is aware that, and is able to make the meeting next week.
I'm gonna be in Ohio, the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So I will not be able to, to attend that. I'm gonna be out of state on a business trip.
Okay.
Anna and, or Kate and Deepa, do you have? It's our normal meeting, so, but this is the one that's odd, but.
But how about Amanda? Would, would she be able to?
This is a special permit.
She's in a bother.
She's in a bother, yeah.
That's why she left the room.
Yeah.
But I assume Anna will be here.
Anna will be here.
And, and it's not a special permit.
No, it's only site plan approval, so you only need a majority, so you only need three, you only need three out of the five.
We only need three.
If Deepa's gonna be able to make it.
I would make it.
Okay. So, and I assume Anna will be able to too. But, okay, so we will look to continue this until the twenty-seventh? Can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue thirteen, Joanne Jive's site plan approval to May, June twenty-seventh, planning board meeting.
Anna, roll cover.
Deepa Venkatai.
Marcelo Honaai.
Catherine Jurzic.
And Trisha Kandai. So we will be reviewing the, the decision document at that time.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, so, just make sure we check with Anna, just.
Yes.
Make sure we can get a, well, we'll see where we land here today, but I expect it to be just to take care of business and the. There's not a lot, a lot on there. I shouldn't have said that. Okay, so next on our agenda is our discussion, and Peter, is there any reason to take these out of order as far as the lot release? Do we have anyone here that?
No one is here for the lot, no one is here for the lot release. That's just a mechanical item.
Would you guys rather deal with that first and then get to the letter, just so it's done?
Okay.
Okay. So is there, what do you have for us to look at with that, Peter?
What's that? Deep and I looked at each other, and I said, I think the, the front is passing us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, hearing the.
Doors.
Yeah, the doors and everything.
Spooky. So we can't go anywhere anyway, because there's a storm outside.
So just to make a note, I was contacted by a realtor who is representing the seller of a house, fifty-five Pennick Road, here in Ashland, and that was part of a subdivision approved back by the planning board in nineteen ninety-six, known as Apple Ridge Estate Three. And so with that said, I went back, dig into the files, and I found the original covenant, which the planning board had, but then also the lot release from that covenant, which is in everyone's packet. And so the original lot release is dated May ninth, nineteen ninety-seven, and this is known as Lot Thirty-One on the lot release from ninety-seven. This lot release was executed by the planning board at that time. However, it was failed to, it failed, it did not get recorded at the registry deeds.
Can I ask, when, when this happens, like, there's a whole list of twelve, and then a blank, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty, did all of those not, like, did this whole document not get recorded, or did just thirty-one not get recorded?
The entire document did not get recorded.
So all of these may be coming back to us piecemeal?
All of these may come in back, and so they're trying to sell it. There was a tax title done on the property, and there's a red flag, because this document, this, this lot release was not recorded, the seller's agent, I mean, the seller, right, the buyer, the lender, therefore wants to see a clear, recorded lot release, going back, releasing them from the covenant F of the original subdivision plan. So it's just a situation where we're gonna get one by one, and it may not happen, because some lenders are different than other lenders, so they're a little bit more, you know, of a stickler, I would say. They may not catch it. However, in this case, this is the second one we've had to take care of in the last, I'm gonna say, two years, and it just came up when this property came up for sale. So therefore, what we are asking, and what we were asked to do, is to do a re-release of this lot, just the single lot, Lot Thirty-One. And I put that in everybody, I think the draft is the front page, and then like the last re-releases, we did add a sentence in here. It says, "This re-release is made with the understanding that on May ninth, nineteen ninety-seven, Lot Thirty-One was released by then Ashland Planning Board and attached there with two." And so therefore, we can sign the lot release, and then we will, we will obviously include the original lot release from ninety-seven, and it will all hopefully go through, go onto record, and the owners can sell their house, and the new people can buy the house, and we can all move on happily.
Was the last one we did one of these other houses, or was it, was it a different road altogether? Do you remember?
I think it wasn't this development. I remember.
It was in this subdivision.
It wasn't this first corner, I believe.
It was in this subdivision. I can look real quick.
I remember the plan.
I'm just wondering, in the interest of.
It was Lot Thirty-Eight.
In the interest of cleanup, is this something that we can, not, not today, because this is what we're doing today?
Release all of them?
So, so if they come back, like, yeah, we did that, you know?
I think would be a good idea.
I, I don't, but I didn't know if there was more research by lawyers that had to be done, or whatever, or if it really, it might be.
You can ask Lisa.
I can ask Lisa, it's a good question.
Just get it over with and just do one, one approval and release everything.
Yeah, I always do one by one as a request comes in, you just do it, and then it kind of goes, but like, it's funny, so, especially with a subdivision, you don't release all the lots at one time. It's segmented, right? So I can tell you right now, it was Lot Thirty-Eight that came in a year ago, and then looking at the plan, you know, Lot Thirty-Eight is, is down here, just a little bit further down. And so therefore, there's two sets of releas-, there's always multiple sets of releases within a large subdivision, such as this one.
So it's a different one that's on this, than, than, it's not listed on this sheet, it's on another sheet?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, yep. And this was found in the building files for that one lot, and so I was able to grab it, scan it, and I sent it over. And, and, and I, I immediately sent it over to the, to the agent, and they said the, you know, the lenders really want a recorded copy, an original recorded copy. So I can ask Lisa and kind of go with it, but I think at this point, just to.
No, we can release this one, I mean.
Yeah, I'm just curious, as we go forward and thinking about cleaning up things that we go, so our board and future planning boards don't have to deal with this thing, now that we're so good at it, right? So.
Cleaning up.
All right, so we don't need public comment on this, because it's not a public hearing.
There's no public comment. I think it's just a motion to approve.
The re-release.
The re-release.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, the release of Lot Number Thirty-One. Thirty-One of the Apple Ridge subdivision.
Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
And a roll cover?
Marcelo Honaai.
Trisha Kendall, oh, sorry.
Catherine Jurzic.
Trisha Kendall, I'm really overexcited about this. Okay.
All right.
All right, so that business is done. All right, so then we are, oh, so we also had, just to make a note, we also had planning board reorganization on this again, but Anna's not here, obviously now, so we typically have a full, full board. Happy to have anyone take over chairing a meeting that would like to do it while we wait for reorganization, but we should probably just keep kicking that until we can all be here. So, okay, if anyone wants to.
Or Anna's not here and unlucky and you assigned her everything, right?
Ooh, another way of thinking about it, okay. By the way, while you were gone.
Guess what?
It was a majority. Okay, so we'll go back to, you know, which I think, just looking through, is obviously the only major thing left on here is the letter, so. So Peter, this is, it's both sections.
Correct, so what I just handed you is both sections of the letter, and then also I added in a new, a chart in the middle, and I kind of put together the current SHI numbers. It's known that we, and, and we've received a signal from five oh one Pond Street that they're gonna pull permits fairly soon and start with a foundation permit, so that's a good item. And so on that sheet, you'll find, excuse me, on that table, you'll find that I, I took the liberty to add those units, because.
How can that be kind of backed up for the commentary? Would you have to, but, because if they say they might, or they will, is Mass Housing going to accept that as the word of?
I don't know, I don't know at Mass Housing, you know, you know, I think, well, we're, I, I'm just trying to, you know, keep the numbers rolling, right, to, to obviously offer the, the most updated forecasts at that, at this point. I don't know, you know, what Mass Housing, those units are not on the SHI, right?
But there was no specific email that they say, hey, we are planning on doing this, so at least there's.
So the owner, the owner came in and talked to Doug, our building commissioner, and said, you know, what do you guys want? Is, you know, gonna come in and do this? They have moved forward, if you remember, there was a, there was a pipe, a sewer pipe, a gravity line that needed to be connected. That work has been completed. And so.
That right there is, is a signal.
Correct, yeah, so that work has actually been completed, and so, and I know the contractor has been speaking to us about the foundational permits, and so I think it's only a matter of time before those are issued. We cannot add those until, obviously, there's a regulatory, there's a regulatory agreement put forth between the town, the state, and the owner, and, and so we're gonna add the, we'll add those to our SHI as soon as possible, but we just cannot right now, but.
But note that the regulatory agreement really can't happen, right, until the units are built.
Correct.
Right? That's the difference between basically the forty B and the, something like, the owner just doing that. It's the forty B, the, the units are added right away. Something like five oh one, where it's not a forty B, they're added when the units are built.
So I thought, because of our housing production plan, when they pulled a permit, we were able to count them. There's something in there about that. I know that.
There's, there's a lot of minutia.
Yes.
Rules when it comes to this. I've been, I've been contacted, you know, I've been speaking with the state on this matter, on this, and because this permit is greater than was issued back in two thousand and twenty-two, and therefore, we're only eligible to add them to the SHI until the regulatory agreement is put through and units are occupied.
Basically, it became too old, given the.
Correct. Correct, correct. So that table, I took the liberty to add those to the current SHI stock, right? And then I also added separately the two forty B projects, which would include on top of five oh one Pond Street, and then the bottom number would be all projects included. The one number that you do not see there is the UGC project, which is obviously in litigation, which is on Memorial Drive, which would be, which was a forty B issued back in the, I wanna say, the summer of twenty-one? Or twenty-two? I, at this point, it, it was fairly long ago. I think it was twenty-one. Obviously, that's still litigation, so not knowing the outcome of that, I did not take the liberty, and I took the liberty to leave that off of the table. So if you see on that, if you include five oh one Pond Street and the two proposed forty Bs, assuming they're built and occupied, Ashland's SHI rises up to thirteen percent.
And it doesn't even count the other projects?
Correct.
That are out there that we had included in the sixty response?
Correct.
Can we get the percent, though, even if we don't put it in the chart of what? Because that almost assuredly at some point will be built, and that was a big part of the ten to sixty main. Like, look, we've, we've worked toward this goal as a community, right? The, the UGC, because it's a lot of units, it's, it's a local initiative, we, like, basically friendly forty B, whichever term you wanna use, that will be built someday. I feel like, if it's not on the chart, I feel like it absolutely has to be mentioned as a percentage.
Between the two responses and what we do then, like, I think if we were more comprehensive in the ten sixty than doing that, like, I just wanna. It looks like a big difference. Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, that makes sense, that, that, the consistency, because they're only a few weeks apart.
Right.
Yeah, no, I can fill, I can fill it, I can take care of that.
Do we just wanna take a few minutes, like, obviously, I've read Marcelo and I's section, but I haven't read the front section, so we can take a few minutes to kind of read through.
Yeah, I was trying to read it, but yeah, I have not.
Okay.
And Peter?
Yes.
On our section, under the project planning, there's a typo that I made, referring to, remitted to building B. I think it's building D.
Okay.
If you can just change that.
I'm just gonna clean up my stuff, yeah. I'm just gonna clean up my stuff, yeah. There was no one note, I'm not trying to. But the, the Wildwood use miss, uh, use, excuse me, the Wildwood mixed-use district was first formed in nineteen ninety-two. And it's been, it's been updated over the years, but that.
I saw the David's incorrect.
It should, it should be here and has been amended.
Oh.
And then since we're right there, that quote, I think, might be like a different spot or a different color.
Hmm.
Okay, is, is everybody, uh. Kind of ready? So our timeline on this is we have to have it to. So it has to be received by the state a week from today?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's quick, right? But I, I mean, I think we're, we're already, I think we're already almost there, right, does, I mean. So.
Yeah, because I, we, we expanded and introduced some of the, some items that Kate mentioned last time around, I think that made it in fine. Kate, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I would like us to see, to put conditions, I think, I think we're smart enough to be able to ask for them.
Yeah, no, that was just wasn't.
No, yeah.
Didn't fall into anyone's purview, I guess, so we kind of need to see how it. How it hashed out, I guess what, you know, before we like, start going and.
Are we gonna try to edit, I think we have to, because the timeframe, edit this live tonight?
Yeah, I mean, it's a shorter document, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda besides meeting minutes that. That we need to do, I mean, even committee updates and stuff can wait till whatever meeting we have next week. You know, so. But the conditions, I don't have the. If we had the other docu, the, the, does anyone have the ten to sixty Main Street document and the conditions there? Because that would form kind of a basis by which we could. An, an outline by which we could plug in new conditions, right? So it could be added to this one and.
Yeah.
Modified, at least we'd have a structure by which to, you know, change.
I mean, the, the, one of the conditions that is, I think, self-evident is that. We, we are saying it on the text.
Yeah.
That.
Three stories.
We think that the project should choose one of the two avenues that the zoning provides. You either do it like a residential development only at three stories, or you add commercial for five stories like the zoning allows. That would be a pretty straightforward condition, right? That we would like to ask.
I mean, that's a good point, and that makes it stronger, because we're not telling them, we're saying, you, you can't get exemptions from everything, so pick one.
Which one?
Yeah.
I think that's staying at one.
Yeah.
For sure.
And the other one that I would just suggest, I feel strongly about it, and we put it on the text when Tricia and I put together, is that to really rethink the site planning. To avoid these really drastic change in the landscape of the land and and make it a little more gradual. I mean, it's a difficult site to develop, but I think the, 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 the big excavation they're, they're making with the big retaining wall at the end. It's, it's almost like bringing on a UFO and landing there, it's not a flat site, so it should be developed.
Yeah.
It's not a flat site.
Yeah, can you work better with the land and what's there to create a better product?
Be more respectful to the land, yeah.
Which actually, when I went through the Wildwood District bylaws more carefully, it, it talks more about dealing with the landscape. Because imagine this was all just la, you know, land when that bylaw was created, so.
So, so those would be two conditions that I think should definitely make it into the list.
Can we say, and it might not be the strongest point, but I think since we were working on a tree bylaw, and it's in that bylaw, that in the setbacks that you keep. You keep the trees.
Yeah, it's mentioned here.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying as a, as a condition of approval.
To, to put it, put it in as a condition.
A, a recommended condition.
Yeah.
I'll be fine with that, I mean, it's, we're, we're trying to tell them to adhere to the structure of, of the district, and that is part of it.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, it's part of the bylaws.
Yeah.
And in fact, that, especially where that retaining, like, there's no way.
Can you imagine that buffer? It would be terrible.
Yeah, they could keep those trees with that retaining wall.
No, it's gonna be nothing.
So.
Mm-hmm.
So what I just did here is up on the screen.
Oh, great.
I pulled over the conditions from the ten to sixty. So really, everything from however and the events of the application is granted, we ask the following condition, conditions be instituted. So number one, two, and three, I think there's five here, I just pulled them over from the Main Street letter.
I think in this case, like, here we have a point and then several sub-points, I, I think it really is just gonna be like one, two, three.
One statement, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we, maybe we don't need to copy and paste any text, it's just kind of giving us.
Yeah, this one is not as complicated as that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Just trying to see if we have easy text, we can just pull for some of those as a starting point. I think we do.
I think the, the, because it. Under paragraph B, the second, or the section B, the second paragraph, like, phrase it really well.
Yeah.
We wanna just like lift it.
Yeah, so right here.
Where, yeah.
Like, this would be point one.
Where, where did you say, Amanda?
This paragraph would be point one, but we'd shorten it.
Oh.
Just rephrase that, that paragraph essentially into the first condition, because that seems to be the most.
Yeah, and we'll just, we can cut and paste it and then shrink it down.
Yeah, that'll be number one.
And then number two, I believe there's a good sentence in here somewhere. So that would be point one, but we'd reduce it to the essentials, probably like.
I guess following that train of thought, the number two is also on the second paragraph of, of section C. Where we were talking about the, the use of the land.
Yes.
The approach to.
Oh, yeah, so the planning board encourages that point?
Rephrase it, but, right?
Oh, I see.
See, I was wondering about, about starting here.
Okay. Oh, yeah, it just, you have to be shortened, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be too long.
I'll just grab.
And not repetitive, yeah.
Yes, we're, we're just, we're grabbing pieces of text.
I'm just dunking them down here.
Yeah, grabbing piece of text, and then we're gonna shrink them into a condition or a request, whatever it is. And then three would be, let's see, where do I, I think that's in the bylaws where I mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
You can take this as number three, this section.
Eight point six, seven.
By law, eight point six, point seven. Okay, so, and then we won't need all the rest of it below that. Okay, so on number one, I think it's just. Trying to think how we phr- phrase the other ones. The project should follow one of two, which, the, the project should follow one of two approaches? Three stories with residential only, or five stories with mixed residential and commercial?
As prescribed in the zoning bylaws? I don't know, do we need to say that, or not?
Well, I think, so, so I think that's what you do, because we are representing the community, and the community, this is a community standard, like, we're fighting for that, right? We're trying to say, please respect, and doing our best job, so.
We wanted to go to like the planning hooks as much as possible, because we feel like that's where we had that in.
Yeah.
Example of success of the state for many reasons.
Did we, on the other one, and, I'm sorry, because I just made you erase this, but for these conditions, we didn't need the planning board believes, did we?
No, I don't think, I don't think.
We should just start with the project should follow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The project should follow.
Yeah, so just get rid of the planning board. Well, you already have the project should follow, Peter, you're just, you're just getting rid of the.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
We're just, again, we're just continuing to shorten so that they're bullet points.
The project should follow one of the two approaches. Our criticism is current general availability, the proposed project should.
So, so then did we want, and this is kind of to the board, did, the project should follow one of the two approaches, three.
Like a community standards, so that's like to get that, like, somehow.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, remove that and just, just finalize it with, sorry, with, as prescribed, or as prescribed by the zoning bylaws.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, and we don't need to get into the.
That's right.
The opinion, because that was already said before.
We'd literally be repeating ourselves. And then why don't you change that dash to a colon? Colon?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, make it a colon instead of a semicolon, I think. No, two dots.
Two dots.
There you go. Unless someone, I mean, you guys.
No, you guys.
Okay, I was gonna say, I'll defer to Amanda, because I think she's a better writer than I. I might take creative liberties when I write.
I either do a colon or a dash.
Okay. All right, and then, so number two.
Remove the planning board encourages, right?
Yeah, remove.
Remove that.
So it just says, it should start at rethink.
The proj, the project should.
Yeah, the project should.
Or the, the applicant should.
The applicant should call over.
Okay. The applicant should rethink the site approach, the. Instead of this approach.
I would just leave that out, the approach, the, the applicant should.
Should create, yeah.
A more fluid connection.
Right.
To, the applicant should create a more fluid connection.
Oh, there you go.
The natural contours of the site.
Okay, the applicant should create. The option, yeah, the applicant should create a more fluid connection between the buildings and the natural contours of the site.
It's always specific, we can operate.
Well, no, what we're saying is that the, the overall planning of the site needs to be rethought. It, as opposed to being just simply racing the hill to create a, a table, to put things on it. Just, just develop something that adjusts to the site.
I was wondering if we should say.
Yeah, no, it makes sense to me, I was.
The applicant should create a more fluid connection between the buildings and the natural contours of the site.
To create the development.
Yes, and then save that last sentence, the development, to create a development that is integrated into the landscape.
But should, I think it should be a little more specific.
Yeah.
Like what?
It's too vacuous, still, due to interpretation, it, you should see, what we're saying is that. I, I, I liked it better before, personally, to say, they should rethink their approach to site planning.
Okay.
Period, they, i- i- in, in the sense that the, the, the grading of the, of the finished product of the property should, should adjust to the existing topography. In, in, in a more.
That's great.
In a more gradual way. Very simple, because that's what we're asking them to, please force them to, to think about this.
Yeah.
So say it, say it in terms of number two, the applicant should rethink the approach to the site?
To, to, to.
Consider.
Yeah, or.
Should reconsider?
But again, if you're asking for conditions, we never say consider, we say.
Yeah, it's a condition, I mean, that was just a condition, right? So should, should, uh. What are the word?
Consider.
From rethink, what's a better word?
Reorganize?
Redesign.
Redesign.
Redesign, pre-grade.
Recreate.
Or, or, or we could say.
Develop, reevaluate, develop.
Should, should.
I think it's work with the landscape.
Reevaluate the, the, the site design approach, or the current, the current sign, side, design approach. To incorporate a more gradual, a more gradual. Help me out, Tricia.
Or to.
I'm still working on the rethink.
Integrate the topography rather than creating a plateau.
Yeah, the, yes, a more gradual, uh, um. Approach to, 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 to the topography.
All right, so let's start from the beginning.
So rethink the urban design landscape to incorporate the site topography. And then we can put Marcelo's thing about to not grade it to be a flat plateau, something like that.
Yeah, so get the first part right, and then we'll move on to the second part.
Yeah.
So is rethink the word that we wanted, I heard reevaluate.
Yeah.
What, Marcelo, this is your, your brain is working and.
Not reevaluate, i- i- it is, I, I think the meaning of the word is, is that, right? Like, go back, go back and, and do it, do it over.
So the applicant should reevaluate the current design of the site, or?
The, the current, um, uh, site planning approach.
Okay.
Or, 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 what, site grading?
No, I think pla, site planning.
Planning, it's, it's more about planning.
Because it's about building locations, too.
Yeah, I like that, site planning approach.
Site planning approach, comma.
Could use the word consider.
To incorporate the natural landscape?
To, not to, it's not to incorporate the national landscape per, per se, it's to incorporate, to, to, to adapt, to, to. Yeah, to, to. To consider, to, to include.
What the bottom sentence says, to, to integrate the development into the landscape?
I- into the, in, into the topography of the site.
Right, not the new landscape.
The specific ask to not.
Exactly, uh, in, 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 instead of, I mean, we can go back, say, to include a, a, a gradual, you know, adaptation of the design to the existing topography. As opposed to a large excavation.
To create a plateau.
Approach to, to create a. A plateau, but, but we were, we already said that kind of before, this, if we could get it a little more concise.
I think my worry is, like, I wanna be super specific, so, because it's very clear what we're talking about when we talk about it.
You have to use words like grading a plateau to make them understand.
To understand that we're saying, like, we're envisioning that you, it's almost like tiered.
Yeah.
That you tier it rather than flatten everything.
Yeah.
Don't let it take away, but, but I think, again, there's a character we're talking about, we need someone to talk about it with a person.
We need a full department of everything. That way it's all getting solved.
But I think the, the last part, so there's three parts to it, you know, the site planning is kind of the, the first part of the paragraph. The topographic, the approach to the, the planning for the topography and, and. The topographic, the approach to the the planning for the topography and 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 placement of architectural masses. And then avoiding large retaining uh structures like ribrap or or, you know, sidewalls which are in excess of twelve feet as shown in their topara- topographic plan.
So minimizing.
Mi- mi- minimize the need, but and that could be kind of the the conclusion of the paragraph.
Minimize the need for large retaining structures.
For 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 excessive or or uh retaining structures of excessive height. And lastly, but I don't know if it's in this paragraph, to create a um a landscapable buffer between the project and and West Union Street to.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's before, otherwise you're bringing again everything from before into here, because doing this, you know.
Well, doing this will allow you to do that, right?
Right, right.
Alright.
And there's no reason to do it if you landscape it properly, there's no reason to have this big, big buffer because it's all.
So you can say.
Yeah, it's all it's all natural.
To adapt the the um. No, no, up above you have, the applicant should reevaluate the current site planning approach to adapt.
Oh, yeah.
And integrate, right?
Yeah.
And integrate the topography, the existing topography, right? Into the site design, comma, in lieu of, right? Or instead, however we wanna say, just to finalize the idea.
Yeah, I think instead.
You say you should do this instead of that, right?
Right.
What's l- lieu, L I U?
I would do instead, I think in lieu of.
Instead.
I U.
Instead, instead words. Is 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 instead of um.
Instead of using.
Yeah.
Instead of.
A plateau.
Of instead of um.
Table.
Of a large excavation um procedure to create a plateau. A plateau uh uh flanked by large retaining structures. That's what we wanna try to avoid. A a large excavation um.
Creating a a.
To create, no.
To create.
To create. A plateau.
T E A U. Pete.
I'm not working here, I got it.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
Gotta use your French, Pete.
I know croissant. And my name is Pierre.
With a a plateau.
Oui oui.
You can say.
It's about the extent of it.
To create a a plateau uh flagged by.
Isn't the next paragraph saying this?
Yeah, I think we'll have to clean that up, uh a a plateau flagged by um.
Except it's engineered structures.
By high or or excessive um um earth retaining structures. And you can remove engineer. I don't know, let's read it and see if that's clear.
The applicant should reevaluate the current site planning approach, I would get rid of the comma. Yeah, get rid of the comma after approach.
Mm-hmm.
The applicant should reevaluate the current site planning approach to adapt and integrate the existing topography into the site design instead of creating or instead of needing a large excavation
Oh, yeah.
to create a plateau flanked by excessive retaining structures.
Or instead of instead of using or or.
Using would be good, because they that's they're using that approach, right?
They're using that as a tool to get to what they're proposing.
Yeah. So instead of needed, put using, instead of using a large excavation.
Flanked by excessive.
I just think that excessive earth retaining structures is too long, and I would just put to create a plateau flanked by.
Large.
Retaining walls.
How about retaining structures? Retaining walls?
It could be ribrap if they use one of those.
Yeah, but I think the point is there, like, you know.
Burns. Yeah, I I I think we'll be fine, I mean, it it will it will be understandable.
Yeah.
Retaining walls, there you go. So um.
Yeah, that's just garbage.
That's just garbage, yeah, yeah, that's garbage.
Yeah, you can delete it.
Okay, so point and so does that sound good now?
I think so.
Woo.
Yes?
Yeah.
You're good?
And then the third one is about um the. I don't know if it should be the applicant or the project, the um. Do we wanna mention something about the tree bylaw? It it doesn't have legs right now.
No.
No.
I I was saying that to us.
Okay.
We would be disappointed if we didn't.
Yeah.
Mention that as a proactive, like we've gotten affirmative, make community work.
I it's almost a al- almost in it's it's interconnected with point number two.
Yeah.
Because it say.
Yeah.
If you if you do that, you would have the chance to maintain a buffer and keep the trees as
Yeah.
a- as the town bylaws require.
You don't have to clarify excavate.
Exactly, and and minimize the the edge of the site, so there's no place for trees, whereas if you do it the other way, there will be.
So if we say um by respecting the landscape. Oh, I guess it's I'm trying to put in the form of.
Yeah, but it has to be in in the form of a condition.
The form of, yeah, condition um. Yeah, so that, yeah, that does not already started then um.
Retain, so it's retain vegetative buffers.
Well, you can say, can can we say by um by following condition number two.
Yes. Yeah.
Uh uh the result would include.
Yeah.
Creating vegetative buffers and maintaining um trees over, I don't know, is there a caliper that that is required or what, six inches or something?
Six.
Or you can say the trees as prescribed by the bylaws or. I don't know if it's if it's if you need to connect it to the other point or.
Well, it might maybe it's better to connect it at the end, like by saying um um respect the vegetative buffers required by the bylaws. This and that could be some, this would happen naturally if condition two is followed.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Because it's directed at the.
Nine hundred and two.
Yeah, first it's the request, so um.
Alright, yeah, that's 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 short and sweet.
Yeah, so back it up again. So um so you're fol- you're starting with respect the vegetative bylaws.
Would you say vegetative?
Sorry, the re- respect the vegetative buffers.
Vegetated buffers.
There's bylaws, right?
Vegetated bylaws.
Respect the vegetative buffers as described in the bylaws.
Would say buffers or should we say setbacks?
It could be setbacks, buffers maybe as a.
It's more clear, right?
Yeah.
Because I think the bylaws says setbacks.
Yeah. And then it might be just a period after bylaws.
Yeah, I don't think you need to repeat eight, nine, six, seven.
No, no, I was.
Yeah.
Simple.
Yeah, that was just the cut and paste it, and then you can say this would happen naturally, naturally seems like the wrong word. That this would happen naturally if condition two. Is applied.
Mm-hmm.
Is happened organically.
Yeah, that could be, naturally seems like we've used.
Yeah, that's still a little bit wonky, but it's.
You could say if it's warranted.
I'm gonna say automatically, but it's not quite.
Yeah, it is almost, that's better, but.
No, this would happen as a result.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
Oh, right, I'll follow in the other.
Of applying condition two.
Yeah, and then you can get rid of the rest after condition two.
There you go, that's it, there's only three conditions.
There they are. In black and white and yellow.
Yeah, and did you make the change to the typo?
Yeah, D and B, B for D.
D?
Kind of similar.
D, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So on page one, it has materials attached, addendum A and B, did we refer to them or are we attaching something? Those are the. I think that's left over from.
No, I get it, that's why I wanted to say I don't.
I don't remember either.
And isn't the chart here in the text?
I don't know, I'm gonna add, I'm gonna edit that tomorrow.
Yeah, because it's not attached, it's right part of the, it's part of the document.
So I just take it out and then I can just edit that and that can be addendum.
A and we'll leave the one, yeah. So Peter's gonna make the.
Yeah, update the chart.
Oh, and and keep it as a denum? As a denum A.
The chart?
Updated version.
I I think it's fine in there.
I think it's I think it's kinda helped put it right in there.
It's not an addendum, it's just part of the text, so.
So leave it in.
No, I was just coming to saying.
I don't think this material's attached, are they?
That's what I know, that was my point.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, do we?
In the ten sixty decision, we pulled the this chart out of the text and we made it an addendum and that's why I'm saying.
Yes. Yeah. No, I think that's why, that's what I'm saying, I think this whole section can go, but I wanted to make sure.
It is, it's left over. So if we're gonna embed it and Peter's gonna be goes edit, so we just take out materials.
I think so. I think that's I think that's cleaner and easier for a small document like this. Yeah. Yeah.
And I have um I have a question, it may maybe completely unwarranted, but in this chart. Shouldn't the, if we're gonna put these other projects that are kind of in process, shouldn't Homer Street be there, is another ten percent affordable units in that one?
Yeah, I can put Homer Street in, I can put.
I mean. That one's approved, that one's probably gonna be in construction before the others, I mean, they were, I don't know, if the if they proceed.
I mean, it doesn't help your numbers, because the way it just it's fine to put it in, but it's only ten percent, so you really come down.
No. No, I'm just saying that we're putting others that are have been approved, but not that one.
Those are like the big, those are small projects.
Yeah.
No, I I get it.
So they're gonna cancel each other out once the census comes out.
Yeah. Right.
The big projects that are gonna really jump up that percentile.
Are these are these ones?
Yeah.
Okay, then.
Like UCG and.
Well, UGC is gonna jump it up big, Horsey will jump it up big, even a hundred Chester Street, there's eighteen units that are gonna be affordable, but that's gonna be covered by hundred and twenties, hundred and seventy four units.
Seventy four.
Yeah.
That are gonna be built, right, so it's really.
It's those two that we would add, right, UGC and Chester?
Yeah.
I would just add UGC.
UGC. So do I.
And five oh one, right? You have five oh one.
Oh, yeah, five oh one in there.
Five oh one's in there.
Chestnut is not here in the table.
We're adding Chester and Arabella.
Oh, okay.
So so we're still on page one, right? So the little dash should be filled in.
Yeah, I think that's a typo, we I think it was just, is it ten to fifty or ten to sixty, what did we call it in the first one?
I don't remember.
Uh, what minute?
I think it's ten to sixty.
It didn't choose five.
Yeah, we always called it.
I've seen it both.
We always called it ten to sixty, but yeah, I think other people have called it ten to fifty.
We just should call it what we did three weeks ago on the submission, whatever it was, right or wrong, keep it.
Yeah, yeah, be consistent. Be consistent with our own document.
Yeah.
I think so.
Peter, page one, page one.
Page one.
Yeah, still on page one. We're trying to fill in that little, or did you, we're trying to figure out on the first letter, did we refer to Main Street as ten to sixty or did we refer to it as ten to fifty? We wanna be consistent with the first letter about what address we use.
Ten to fifty.
You said ten to fifty on the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, then we should be consistent.
They're the same, yeah.
Next question to the, like, to the the board in the letter, like, I always see, like, December abbreviated, like, I'm used to writing it out all the time, do we? So it seems, like, I would write it out, I wouldn't just say DEC, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, to the, yeah.
Yeah, so wherever you see DEC, that could be a find too.
DEC?
Yeah, we want it to be December, we won't, don't want it to be DEC.
So that um in that.
It's in the other months.
Yeah, it just, it always looks weird to me.
In the same section, so you have A and then your planning board of December twenty two, like, two more sentences down, so you say the S H I five point six two will increase to seven point one, but the chart right below says seven point two.
Okay, hold on a minute, let.
No, I know, we're just gonna catch up with the Decembers.
In the chart you can leave them, like, I think they're fine in the chart abbreviated, but just not in the chart, in the text they should reran out.
Alright, you have the two Decembers.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what's the next?
Alright.
Seven point two. The fourth line of paragraph A.
Just before the S H I chart.
Yeah, so up in the text, there's seven point one.
Oh, okay.
And in the chart, it says seven point two.
Gotcha.
So we wanna be.
Which one is right?
Seven point two.
Okay.
I'll redo the math.
Yeah, it should be consistent.
So um I've also had a few other things in that paragraph, so if, starting with it is understood. Right, yeah, under A, it is understood that the developer blah 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 um will file a foundation permit and start construction, um adding adding these one hundred and twenty units, so it's referring to the since adding these one hundred and twenty units to Ashlands, so comma S, current S H I um.
Why am I remembering that it was not a hundred and twenty, the number? I thought it was higher, is it's one twenty?
It's one twenty.
Really?
Pon Pon Street, yeah.
Wow.
Because that was a few years ago and we were, they were smaller.
I know, I keep thinking that that's a that that was a big number, but and then one seventy four.
One seventy four is Chestnut, I remember that one.
Chestnut, then, yeah.
Okay.
Multiplication.
Okay, and then I, is there an extra space after?
Before that percentage sign?
Okay, um.
Do we need, Peter, do you wanna put a note that you're adding UGC or just on that table, like?
Yeah, I already made a note, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I just said that, yeah, addition of UGC approved already be on S S Street.
Right, so does anyone have anything else on paragraph two or do we want it up so we can read it?
That's good.
Okay, um and then moving on to page three. I think I just on the very, at the end of the very first paragraph, um I think I have Union Street, the grade elevation between Union Street and West Union Street, I think that should be between Waverly Street and West Union Street.
Yeah, we have to be consistent, because I think was in different paragraphs is called differently, right?
Oh, yeah, is it West Union there or Union?
East Union and West Union.
Yeah.
Union Street.
East Union.
It's East Union.
No, East Union is in the high school, that's East Union.
Oh, East Union. Yeah, but the other side is Waverly.
Mark is right, it's East Union.
Yeah, it's it is.
It's in that same area.
Yeah, it is East, I think it is East Union, West Union is is the other.
Is the middle ice cream.
Yeah, West Union, West Union is up by the Shell Station or the Mobile Station and the Community Center, that's West Union.
Yes, Mark is correct.
Right, you're heading west to Hopkinton.
We just approve a project that's on Union Street, which is that road, not Waverly Street.
Yeah, this splits, so it raises.
So it changes in that corner where the public safety building becomes Waverly?
That becomes East Union.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the other one becomes Waverly or stays as Union?
It's Waverly, I think. It's Waverly, I think.
It's a rural East Union.
Union and East Union, I mean, it's, that's why.
I think it's, toward Framingham, it's Waverly, I think.
Yeah.
I, in Framingham, but it's pretty tricky, 'cause I live right down the road, and I've seen it as Waverly when you go towards Framingham, it's called Waverly in Framingham. I don't know if in Ashland, it's called Waverly. I think it's called Union.
I think so.
Peter, you can see it there in the map.
I'm pulling it up.
There you go.
We're gonna solve this issue.
I think too, I'm like.
Because, yeah, as soon as you cross into Framingham, it's called Waverly.
I don't know, I mean, on Google, Mike said it's Waverly.
I thought it was Waverly, yeah.
I'm in it, I got it.
Yeah, Waverly, it's what's, Union Street's what's.
If the internet says it, it has to be right.
All right, so here's the town map.
That's true. You know, Google.
It's Waverly.
And I leave it on this.
Okay, so this is the second question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so you have East Union here.
And Waverly.
Waverly here.
Stand corrected, then.
And then Union is here.
Even though it's the same street, it's like Boston, you, you pass five street names, but you stay on the same street.
Yeah. No, it's true, because the CVS, I know, 'cause of my doctor's prescription, I think it's just Union Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I know, 'cause I used to work on West Union, just a little further.
On the other side.
Yeah.
CVS is right where it switches from Union to West Union.
Oh, is it?
Like, well, it's right after, yeah.
Are there Starbucks?
I think it's like the, 'cause I get my haircut in, like, up there, and that's West Union, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Like, right across from the menu.
But it's a really big town, and we need to be specific.
There's too many roads. Okay.
That's hilarious.
So, Waverly is good.
Thank you, Mark. East Union, so between Waverly Street and East Union Street, double wrong there, okay.
Okay, then, that takes care of that one.
I think, if pure, it looks okay, 'cause it's a quote.
Yeah, I didn't know why it comes, it's in those, in section A, and then the bylaw, eight point six point fifteen, both quotations.
It doesn't print as, but. Yeah.
Like, printed gray, but it looks okay up there.
Um, I think it's.
I think it's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you got it on the second one, to the lower paragraph?
No, I don't think I got that.
Yeah, it's almost like, you know, piece that is it's italicized, but it's not.
Did we italicize that in the other one? Like, I don't remember, like, I didn't.
I think it's okay, probably it's good practice, if, make sure it's a quote, it's, I think it's good.
No, I pulled it directly out of online.
Of the bylaws, yeah.
Yeah.
I started looking that, and I was gonna try to make a table, to make, 'cause what you guys did, 'cause, but it was just overwhelming, so I'm like, forget it.
Okay, good, then I'm good.
For height and with these considerations, in the first line, um, the town's bylaws and vision of some district is an ideal place for residential development, and this, oh, nevermind.
Where are you?
You mean out loud, I edited my own edit. Will you know why?
Because it's plural.
Establish or establishes.
Yeah, because it's the bylaws, is that a plural?
The bylaws, exactly.
And I did the same thing, except word was telling me, no, it needs to be this, I'm like, why?
'Cause you have to go back to your modify.
Yeah. Computer was right again, you're sure wrong.
Robots, I know.
My boss is hiding from me again around the house. My boss agrees that these two approaches, three stories.
It's the second set of a comma.
Forgot.
I'm saying multiple places where I'd have West Union Street everywhere, I don't know. Obviously, having them like, country.
Yeah, the Waverly Street here.
Is there a dash between the three stories with the residential dash?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You have it in project planning, Tricia, West Union Street.
Yes, so this needs to be, again, East Union or West Union.
Control F West.
Hmm, but be careful, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're up there, two, three locations, one they're changing, two of them you're changing west of each, and one of them doesn't have any.
Just as a more.
Oh, yeah, right here, yeah. One, two, was the other one, or was the third?
There's two in D, and.
Yeah, I saw those.
One at the, in the second paragraph of C, says West Union instead of.
Oh.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On B, um, this isn't a big deal, but on the last sentence, as a result, design creates a much higher density without the benefits that commercial uses bring to the community at large, commercial space will serve the residents with goods and services, employment opportunities, like, that's, it's, right, somebody's gonna work in, if there's a business there, employment opportunities.
Oh, to add that in?
Yeah.
Like, as another benefit.
Yeah.
So, right, the, 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 employment opportunities, no, what would be, um.
Yeah, that's, that's what Kate said.
Serve the residents with goods and services.
Comma, employment opportunities.
Comma, yeah.
Employment opportunities, and create across them.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know when Anna's getting back her suit?
Not, uh, Sun, not till Sunday. But we could have it, I guess, if we are, if we can't.
We could sign it and leave it ready for her to sign, right?
I guess, if we put the separate signature, but that chart's gotta replace, and it might move things.
No, I have enough space.
Yeah.
I have one more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what, when we have to give it to Michael to. Put Sunday or Monday, if she's.
Would be on Monday, if she arrives Sunday, she, if she could.
Yes, plenty of time.
Maybe you can coordinate with her, Peter, to try to see if she has time to come and sign it.
Yeah, I can coordinate with her, I can update this chart, and if I have to squeeze it a little bit, I don't know.
Charlie, clear the margins a little bit, too, though.
Yeah.
Um.
But when are we going to sign it?
I think we're gonna sign it, look, the signature page is.
Tonight, just so we're done.
Did, did we vote on our other one?
Yeah.
I think we did.
We did?
So, we should probably.
Don't be great, that's it on Saturday, just to be careful.
If the, that ends to.
Oh. Yeah, that's true.
Peter's wondering if we should give the chart, it's on a separate page.
So, we're doing a hundred Chester Street.
You're just wondering if the chart's gonna be too big, we'll go on to a separate page.
Yeah.
It seems like you could fiddle with the columns to, you know, like, the columns could become narrower, is that possible?
Yeah.
To give more room to the title and the text.
So, it's fine, I can just do, I can just do that, so I just put ten to thirty, chestnut, ten, a hundred to a hundred and thirty, Chester Street, a hundred forty meters, which has a set affordability.
But it's like, this column could actually widen, 'cause this one's really, doesn't need all that space, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that would make the chart, yeah, like that. You know, and if other, like this one, too, that that could go to two lines, you'd, you'd give more space to that first box.
But you still gotta add UGC.
Yeah, yeah, but you see how, you see a much more compacted guy.
You see it in there?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, right.
Did you see it in there?
So.
Is there any other projects you wanna add?
I think it was just those two, and fifty one.
Yeah, you can add two, two rows for those.
Yeah, so that, yeah, I think that's, it's thinking it would be great for the site appropriateness to, to start its own page.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then you get bylaws, but yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think that.
That's perfect.
So, that should give us, give you a little wiggle around.
Yeah, just to put it right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And looks nice, too.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Good with that.
All set?
I'm sure we're all set.
Should I make a motion?
Yeah, yes.
I make a motion that the planning board approve the memo of the Ashland Planning Board regarding the proposed Oasis of Ashland Project, sixty one Waverly Street, Ashland, with the, um, final edit to the chart discussed.
Second that.
Anna Rolkova.
Deepa Venkatai.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzeg, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, and Amanda, you're on this one, too.
Amanda has aye.
All right, um, okay, so, um, I think all we have is, I, I don't, unless there's something urgent, I don't think we need to go through updates today. We're good, we're, but, but anything urgent, we can.
Can I comprehensive plan?
Yep.
Yeah, um, so the comprehensive plan on Tuesday, June twenty fifth, sixty eight P M, at the Community Center, so we're getting into the, um, next phase, which is taking, starting to analyze the data and a vision, so I would say if anyone can attend, or send representative of your neighborhood, your group, something, it's kinda getting important work, and I just wanna publicize that it's definitely still a public process, public is welcome, I think that was part of the reason to switch there.
Okay.
So, that's it.
I guess then I'll make just a brief thing, that the CPC met, you know, nothing, um, given that we're right after town meeting, there wasn't a, a lot, kinda just kinda kicking off things again, there wasn't much to discuss, MBTA working groups also met this week, and, um, we're just starting to follow up on all the, okay, five oh one, looks like it's going online, what are our other, what's the math looking like with, with the different things, so that we're, we're tracking those, and we're also looking at dates, uh, obviously with Joe, that, um, okay, um, on this, I don't have them in front of me, on this date, we're looking to meet with the, with the select board, you know, on this date, this is when we're looking at having our informal forums to get feedback before creating a bylaw, we talked about, um, a little bit of the ease of creating a bylaw this time, because a, a lot of the sections of it are the same, right? We, we already figured those out, we already figured them out with the state about how to word them, it's just the things that might be different, we'll be putting our focus in those, so the process is a bit easier, but we're also still waiting, watching and waiting, obviously, given the stuff we just talked about tonight, so, so it's, anyway, it's.
Is there any, like, I mean, we had said about the, uh, ten to sixty main, for one, it was sort of looking at density, someone was gonna crunch some numbers, that hasn't.
Yeah, we're looking at that, like, the number, we, the number we put in our analysis right now, we put it, we put like, ten to sixty in at half, it's what it's proposed now, and we're still getting stuff that works for us, so we, does that make sense? Like, like, they, the, the proposed density is, I think, thirty six units an acre currently at ten to sixty, we're putting in our things at eighteen.
We're being fairly conservative, we're just going eighteen, twenty units per acre, uh, which obviously would classify you to add those units and add those acreage, you know, within that calculation, but you're not going up, up and beyond what that proposed project is.
Yeah, and, and right.
Or what it was.
But, yeah, right.
Or what it was before.
So.
And right now, it's just experimental, we're not proposing that it be eighteen, we're just trying things and see what happens to the numbers, that's what we're doing.
So, the original proposal that was written, drafted, got through the state, got through Lisa and me, that's, I'm assuming, still on the play, especially, it's good news that five oh one's going forward, 'cause that was, that was like, an uncontrolled risk, they could come away and, and not build, right? They could go a ten percent, now it's looking like it's gonna be solid at the twenty five.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the plan, to me, is still looking like, maybe doesn't have to change.
Everything is still in play.
Yeah.
I would say the, I would say the working group, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're making no determination at this time what the best course of action is, because we're still only a month from where we were before.
So, but I, I think, I'm assuming it's sort of that, we didn't, did we alter the sort of low risk, use what we have plan? 'Cause I thought that was well, well agreed to, right?
No, no. No, no, we haven't.
We still have that?
Yeah.
We still have that, we can still do that moving forward, and the other thing is, you know, was other, if there's other situations that we didn't, we, we knew about, but there were risk factors that we took, like the UGC land, right, and so, that was always something out there that we don't know what's gonna go on, so, we could take that away and replace it with something else, right, the ten to sixty or the Waverly Street, but we can kinda move things around in either direction.
Yeah, because, because ten to sixty, we likely will get answered by the state in about July, so that, that information is gonna come in.
Correct.
That's why we're running numbers, but we do not say we have the best plan yet, so, we, we are not at that point.
We're still in a very good spot.
We're running numbers, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but anyway, that's where that is, any other questions on that? Like I said, but just letting you know, we are, we're working in the background, Alvaro is still hard at work on the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't have any, um.
Public comments there?
Oh, yes, we do have public comment, so, just, anyone have any other reports first, and then I'll open it up to public comment? All right, public comment is now open. Sorry, Mark.
Okay, good evening, Mark Soney, forty nine hundred and twelve, that's that man's off of East Union Street. I have this one thing to say, which I wanna say through the chi, through the chairman, to the town planner. I wanna congratulate you on the May twenty eighth zoning board meeting that you were on. The zoning board that talked about six, six, sixty one.
Mark. Thank you.
Yes. It was ve, I was very quiet, I was on mute, and I listened, and zoning board, listen, contribute, and you talked it through with everything that was, was, hopefully was gonna be down the road, sort of work. And this is the completion, hopefully the completion of the road with this letter. But you and the zoning board, the appeals chairman, Mr. Um.
Trefethen.
Thank you. You two worked it out like a even steel ship.
Well, well, thank you, and, and John's a great guy, and he's lovely to work with.
Plus, one thing for you, for you and John, I heard the latest podcast.
Oh.
And that was, and that was coinciding with a long municipal town committee, between committee, what happens and all that, and lawyer to planner sort of talked back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
I went to see our town manager today, I asked him if I could be next on it.
Oh.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, anything else, um, that anyone has before we go to meeting minutes?
Let somebody know, obviously, we're gonna meet, um.
Next week?
Next week, twenty seventh, um, and then we are scheduled to meet twice each month, July and August. If everyone could just kinda send me their vacation schedules, if they're gonna make one meeting or not be, or any of the meetings, just so we can, like, kinda shift some things around. Right now, we have one new application for a cell tower, which is my twenty four tower road, which is kind of behind, um, kind of in that Chestnut Street area, it was filed a couple, just a couple days ago, but that's gonna be the big, the one item that's gonna be kinda starting, and so that, um, due to the applicant's, um, schedule, he is asked to start that on July twenty fifth, um, and so, just with that said, again, we'll meet in August, but regarding any summer schedules or attendance, just please send me an email, just so we can kinda work things out, how we had to work out last week, kind of, but it is the summertime, it's fluid, we all take vacations, so.
Yeah, so, right now on our agenda for next week, we have twenty three, Joanne Drive, but.
Yep, we have Joanne Drive, and that's really it at this point.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, um, so then to meeting minutes, these are the minutes from May ninth, um, which was when we first, we were looking at the, um, the approval not required, for the, we were first, we were first looking at the approval not required.
Yes, we were first looking at the approval not required for the A and R on Merrill Street.
Yeah, for the, um, the property that was divided, we were looking at six Chestnut Street, one fifty one, it was a busy meeting.
Should we change this to ten to fifty Main Street, now that we have it clarified?
You know, so it's, so, so if you go over there, sixty doesn't exist anymore, the sixty comes from the assessor's database. Oh, okay. So on the tax bill, it's ten to sixty Main Street, in real life, there's no sixty, the big brick building's actually fifty. And so it's kind of, it's kind of gone back and forth. Could be both. Could be both, it's interchangeable.
Um, under that section, ten to sixty, you have document sections, the color-coded document provided by, that's not by Tricia.
Yes, that's, I had that noted too, the, um-
It was the, that rendering.
Yeah, um, and I would call it a conceptual site plan, we could just leave it as conceptual site plan, cause that's what it really was. Yeah, but I, I didn't create it, that was-
Okay, conceptual site plan.
Yeah, um, the other thing I would say is that back on, um, back on that approval not required, that was when, I believe, I also asked about, you know, I wrote in as another note, Ms. Kendall noted that the garage was under the ten-foot side setback line and asked if that was an issue.
Correct.
You know, so we could just put it in like that, I just think it's the start of that discussion later, and so I was, just thought it'd be better to have it in there.
Okay, can I just take that?
Yeah.
I'll take that, I'll wait to change this.
Anyone else have any? Other than that, I, um, oh, I also, I also took out, um, on line two eighteen, Ms. Kendall noted a typo in the spelling of her name on page four. I don't, I don't think we need to have things like that in the meeting minutes.
No. A little too specific.
Yeah, yeah. It just seems like it maybe, you know, we, yeah. So.
It's like tricky to read that when you're reviewing another meeting, it's like-
It's like a photograph of a photograph of a photograph, kind of thing. Otherwise, those were my only, my questions.
Yeah.
Alright, um.
All good. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from May ninth, twenty twenty-four, as amended.
Second. Anna Rolkova?
Deepa Venkatai.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So on that, I think we're done.
Make the motion to adjourn.
That was quick. Anna Rolkova?
Deepa Venkatai.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Amanda Hayes, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye, thanks, everybody.
Alright, don't go anywhere after a bunch, oh, get all the stuff to sign.
Stop to sign. Or, you can't escape, or Peter will just have to track you down.